You may have changed the filter at the top for not necessarily the right month or year.
No.
I think it was blank.
I had it.
I did too. I was able to get there.
Thanks for letting us know.
Interesting.
Yeah.
What provider were you using?
Wood.
Like Frontier?
Providers.
Regretfully, Comcast.
No regret there.
But we continue to have that more money every year for some reason.
And the service quality isn't improving?
Sure.
Are you able to get it now? Or can you see the agenda now?
I have it fathered for 45 minutes.
Only on your phone?
No.
When I've had it.
Very odd.
Getting back. Better. You're crazy, you're getting back. Better drugs.
You'll have to climb over the fence.
Sounded very Star Wars-y.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, it did close our restaurant.
Yeah, I can understand that. Not the golf course. There's a big difference between a gym and a golf course.
When you're out in the open.
Yeah. Big difference. I know it did. Facilities. So was that a builder or was that?
Really hard to hear.
How was it?
Yeah, you don't want to close the golf course. They closed all the ski areas for at least a week.
Did they?
Yeah.
Wow.
They're trying to figure it out.
So, 230 gig at 3:00. There's a screen cap. Once you start, when you get to 90 percent of it per month, then they send you email.
That you had to pay so much more.
10K. Or you can just buy another, you know, subscribe to higher rate. But we just started that. We just stopped. Cable. So we're just figuring it out. So you only had email. It was weird. I can't look at that. I have to do a few. I need to know because if mine is, I've got to be able to.
Yep.
Oh, wow. Really. How are you doing?
Good.
Can't wait to get home and see how I'm at. Gonna have to maybe limit your device to one.
Wow. San Francisco Bay area shelter in place. I'm not sure what that means.
What does it say?
Uh, six San Francisco Bay area counties are just shelter in place.
That means if you're homeless, you're gonna stay homeless. Right where you are.
Right where you are. In your car, in your boat, in your motorhome, in your tent, in your bushel, in your bench. Sounds like Dr. Seuss.
Give me a question.
Time to call this meeting, regular meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Thank you. Bernie, can I get roll call, please?
Hogan?
Here.
Burton?
Here.
Chaney?
Here.
Carter?
Here.
Roberts?
Here.
Smith is excused.
Thank you, Bernie. Before we get into public comments, I just want to make clarifying. Mayor McDonald is on vacation, somewhere on a plane between here and Europe, as I understand it. And I'm in my role as Mayor Pro Tem. So we were gonna move into the regular meeting agenda. First up is public comments. I ask if anyone has public comments, that they come to the microphone, state their name and address for the record. The timer will give you up to three minutes. Draw attention to the fact that the timer is at the end over here, and when it changes to red, the three minutes have arrived. Thank you.
Thanks. My name's Douglas Strabel. I live at 4307 Northwest Oregon Street in Camas. And I'm here for a couple of reasons. Firstly, I've got some documents I want to enter into the record. Who takes those?
Thank you.
My comment is to address the fact that you have a consent agenda tonight that's being reviewed and processed on a time and at a day that does not allow community participation. As you can see, there's nobody here but me. And the reason I bring that up is because of what's on that consent agreement today, the consent agenda. And the consent agenda totals almost $7 million. And that includes the Lake Road Everett Roundabout authorization of $6 million plus. This should be done without the ability, should not be done without the ability, to have community discussion. Because tonight, there's nobody here to talk about it. And I have also, to the document I turned in to you, is I've attached some next door comments today that Phil Williams posted, trying to make a lot of people aware of what was going on. I read them, I looked at them, I know most of it already. But again, I'll just come back to these two items that are on the consent agreement agenda for today, the $7 million plus. There's a lot of people in the city who do not really approve a way that's being handled, the Lake Road Everett intersection. So that's it, that's all that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the public have public comments? Okay. Council moving to the consent agenda. What would you do?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I would like to pull item I from the consent agenda and move to the regular agenda.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. We'll move item I, and it will move to the meeting items, number C as in Charlie. And for the remainder of the consent agenda, minus item I.
Move to approve.
Second. It's been moved by Carter and seconded to move the consent agenda minus item I. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Non-agenda, staff. Anyone need anything to clarify? Council, starting on my left, Mr. Hogan, anything?
Nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Roberts?
I do. If I can find it here.
No pressure.
So to the council and the public and everybody here today, Americans are fighters. We do what we have to do when we are attacked. We hunker down, we make the necessary sacrifices, as evidenced by the many wars that we've encountered throughout the years. As Americans, we offer ourselves to help in whatever way we can to get the job done. This virus that has crept upon us is an enemy. As a community, we intend to do whatever it takes to crush it. As a Camas City Council member, I believe I speak for all council members, we do not shrink back. Council members were elected by the citizens of Camas. With this comes a full measure of trust. Trust includes expectations from citizens for the council, to work with diligence, to be good stewards with taxpayer money, and also stand up and say no when it's needed. The avenues at our disposal to conduct city business in the open are workshops and councils, council meetings, where projects and items are discussed numerous times before voting. Many citizens are choosing to stay put in their homes until this enemy is defeated. This council will carry on with our sworn duty and continue to govern the city and protect its citizens according to Washington state law. We are all in this together, and together is our forefathers before us. We put our trust, faith, and hope in God alone, our Creator and giver of life. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Burton?
Nothing else, Dan, thank you.
Mr. Chaney?
Just briefly, I know that you as Mayor Pro Tem may not...
I know that you as Mayor Pro Tem may not be totally finished with your service to us, but I just wanted to thank you and compliment you on the energy and the effort and the focus that you've given to help not just the citizens of Camas, but the staff in terms of your input representing the council's perspectives. You've done a great job, and I know you're not done, but I want to thank you for what you've done so far. And I'm seeing nods down the dais here, so it's great.
I would make one comment in response. I wish my voice was doing as well as the rest of me. This bronchitis will not leave. Not contagious, but it sure is messing up my talking department. Thank you, Dan. That means a lot to me. Okay, so, next on the agenda is any mayor announcements. As Mayor Pro Tem, earlier this evening at workshop, council worked through our upcoming town hall meetings and agreed on some changes in formats and, in some cases, location. But we will continue at the schedule unless it needs to change due to technology issues that are still being worked out. And they will be virtual town halls later in March, and then one in April and one in May at current schedule. There will be no physical presence by the public at those meetings. Details will be forthcoming many times between now and then, I'm sure. Secondly, we've also agreed as a council that we will continue to have our regular workshops and our regular council meetings, and come up with a better forum to include the ability for virtual communication and not need have public physical presence, but yet still meet the laws of the state of Washington, as well as the needs of the community to be able to talk and listen to the counselors as they're doing their work. Details to follow on that. Please continue to follow our website for any other updates in both meetings and schedules and how to reach us, as it were. So with that, I have two proclamations that I get to probably, hopefully, finish on my voice, and that's not the end of my night. First proclamation, whereas on February 21st, 2020, the Camas High School gymnastics team won the 2020 Washington State Foray Championship, and, whereas this victory is the third championship win for the Camas High School gymnastics team, and whereas the members of the gymnastics team demonstrate the true meaning of teamwork by supporting each other during difficult times, as well as during triumphs. And whereas the Camas High School team won the state championship in dominant fashion, beating the second-place team by more than five points. And whereas the City of Camas desires to recognize the achievements of the Camas High School gymnastics team in being the first program in the school's history to attain three consecutive state titles, and to recognize the tremendous amount of hard work and dedication of these student athletes. Now, therefore, I, Greg Anderson, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Camas, do hereby proclaim March 16th through 20th, 2020 as Camas High School Gymnastics Team Appreciation Week. I'll sign that in a few minutes. Pardon me. Apologize. Second proclamation, whereas C-Trans provides valued fixed route and paratransit services in Clark County that is safe and dependable, and whereas C-Trans travels nearly 6 million miles per year, the equivalent of going to the moon and back 12 times, and whereas C-Trans has been serving the community since 1981, currently providing over 6 million rides per year, and whereas C-Trans employees safely operate large vehicles every day in unpredictable traffic weather while offering exemplary customer service, maintaining facilities and equipment, and providing critical administrative support. And whereas C-Trans connects people to opportunities, supports economic vitality, and enhances quality of life for the community, and whereas C-Trans employees do their part in making our community the best place to live in the country. Now therefore, I, Greg Anderson, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Camas, and the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim March 18th as Transit Employee Appreciation Day. I'm gonna asshole add that I enjoy serving as the Camas representative on the C-Trans board. I'm in my fourth year of doing that, and I enjoy representing Camas on that board. And I'm gonna enjoy signing that document for them to pick up, hopefully tomorrow, because they want to post it in their lunchroom on Wednesday. Okay. I think my voice is gonna make it. We'll see. To our regular meeting items. Item A, Kathy?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Before you counsel, is resolution number 20-004 revising the 2020 fee schedule. This has four changes in it. It deletes fees for impact fee credits and adds an administrative fee. The second, it has passed through for cemetery costs, updates for building fees, and solid waste costs moved from code to the fee schedule. I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have.
Council, any questions or discussion?
No. No, we had a good discussion two weeks ago.
Okay. Any motions?
Mr. Pro Tem?
Yes?
I move that resolution 20-004 be read by title only.
Second. It's been moved by Carter and seconded that resolution 20-004 be read by title only. All is in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Resolution number 20-004, a resolution revising the City of Camas fee schedule for
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes?
I move that resolution 20-004 be adopted.
Second. It's been moved by Carter and seconded that resolution 20-004 be adopted. Any discussion?
No.
All is in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item B on the meeting items is resolution 20-005 revising the procedural rules for conduct of city council meetings. Jennifer from staff is not present this evening due to illness. I'm gonna kind of talk through it with council. This is the resolution that's been before us, I think, three, possibly four times, for discussion, listening to the public, and consideration. And is there any discussion from my peers?
Nope.
Any motions on the resolution before us?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes?
I move that resolution 20-005 be read by title only.
Second. It's been moved by Carter and seconded that resolution 20-005 be read by title only. All is in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution number 20-005, a resolution adopting revised procedural rules for the conduct of city council meetings and workshops pursuant to RCW 35A.12.120.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes?
I move that resolution 20-005 be adopted.
Second. It's been moved by Carter and seconded that resolution 20-005 be adopted. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That helps clarify things going forward. Appreciate letting it get more brought up to current processes as well. Okay, remaining item is number C, which was the former item on the consent agenda. Ms. Carter, you asked it to be pulled?
Yes. Due to the large amount that is being asked to approve in this bid, if Mr. Wall, could you please introduce this item?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So the Lake Road and Everett Street intersection improvement project, as councils are aware, we've gone through an extensive process on the design and public outreach, and selected a preferred alternative, and then recently have gone out to bid on that project to receive construction bids. The city received five bids from contractors in the area. We had an engineer's estimate of approximately $5.7 million, and the low bid was presented by Clark &amp; Sons Excavating from Battleground, Washington, in the amount of $5,269,528.33. Staff has gone through and checked the bid and verified that the amounts were correct, and we would recommend that council award the project to Clark &amp; Sons. And real quick, I think it's also worth covering the funding on the project. We were successful in receiving the $3.3 million in grant funding through the Transportation Improvement Board, and that'll vary a little bit based on the actual cost and the percentages of the actual construction, but that grant, they would like us to use that as quickly as possible. And then the remaining amount of the funding came from low-interest loans through the Public Works Trust Fund, and the interest rates on that were very favorable at 1.58 percent for a 20-year term. So the funding for the project is in place, and we are ready to proceed. Be happy to answer any questions.
Council, any questions or comments?
Not that haven't been asked.
I would like to just review the things I remember from the meetings. How many meetings have we had, Steve?
Public, open house-type meetings, to clarify. There was three official meetings of the public, but it was brought up at multiple other occasions as well. That doesn't count city council meetings, for example, that were all public and there were multiple discussions here at city council. It also came up at the North Shore Sub-Area Plan Meeting the first time and got quite a bit of discussion on it. And then we had two separate committees that were established that included citizens and tried to get additional feedback. We had the website that was available, and email and phone discussions among staff, so a lot of public input on it.
What I remember from the Washington State Department of Transportation were the following items. The improvement, safety improvements, 37 percent reduction in collisions were these roundabouts. The history has shown that that's a standard. 75 percent reduction in injuries, 90 percent reduction in fatal collisions in roundabout intersections, a 40 percent reduction in pedestrian collisions in these types of roundabouts. It has the benefit of low travel speed that go through these, as opposed to red light intersections where people may try to beat a light and T-bone other cars. There's a one-way traffic flow to make it easier for people to get used to it and have less likelihood of an accident. There's reduced delay, and we do know that that intersection in the morning and in the afternoon is a big delay spot in the City of Camas. And it has less maintenance costs because there are no lights, there's no electrical or signs or whatever that are associated with red light type of intersection. And so it meets the criteria that the Washington State Department of Transportation has put as the main criteria for the best use being a roundabout. So that's why I'm in favor of this, and I encourage the rest of you to vote yes for this, too. So thank you, Steve.
Other council questions or comments?
Could you just remind us the comparative costs for those two new roundabouts down on Highway 14 in Washigo? That just went in last summer. I was curious how they compare to this project, which is significantly more complex.
Yeah, and that is something to be aware of. So we do have a, excuse me, a cost comparison that is available on the website. The two roundabouts on SR14 that were recently constructed, that was $4.4 million. And I believe that was actually for both of them, so 2.2 million each, I believe. But a lot of difference in the project area. When you look at the width and the, kind of just the terrain that the projects occurred in, you know, the area that Lake and Everett's in is a lot more complex than most of the roundabouts that have gone in, including our own, you know, at Sixth and Norwood that was roughly $2 million for that roundabout in 2016. And then the area of improvement is much, much greater here compared to like Sixth and Norwood, for example, where we're going up Lake Road to essentially the lodge, we're going south on Everett down to Fallen Leaf Lake, we're adding the pedestrian improvements in the sidewalks there. So it's just a different project, if you will, than just the intersection itself.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Never miss an opportunity, I guess. I just need to say that I support this project for a number of reasons that have just been explained, but more prominently, how long's this been going, Steve, from the time we started the public process?
Well, it's actually, it depends on how far back you'd like to go, because there were prior efforts of the city planning documents that actually identified the intersection. So that goes back to the current TIF study that was done in 2011. And then we had another conversation with council about this exact project in the 2016 timeframe, and then the most current effort started in 2018.
Okay, thanks. From my experience, I've been with the city either as an employee or in this role as council for the last 12 or 13 years. I can remember no time where the city staff and the city government has vetted a project as thoroughly and is engaging with the public as this one has been. And I think it kind of, and hope that it sets a model for those ones that are big in the future for us as well. During that process, I don't, I recall questions, I recall some criticisms. I think I remember staff and council adapting to some of those things. But having said how much process this has gone through and how much support I heard is...
is in my role as a council member, I can't do anything but support it. As a matter of fact, when I was leaving home tonight for this meeting, my neighbor waved me down and said, "Where are you going?" "I'm going to the council meeting. What are you doing?" Well, I said, "One of the things on the agenda tonight is the roundabout at the school." He said, "I went to all three of those meetings, and I am 100% supportive of it." That was spontaneous, and this was a person who typically is pretty critical about how we spend our money. So, coupled with the fact that we're getting support from other sources to pay for this, I see no other choice but to support it.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
I just have one short one. Roundabouts are known to be economically wonderful. They're a time saver, they're a maintenance money saver. I lived in Europe for 11 years. Of course, there's roundabouts everywhere in Europe, and Kamus citizens are no different from any other citizen in the world. It's a one-lane roundabout. It's not hard to maneuver. They'll be well-marked, and really, everything, change takes time. I understand that. So, just bear with us. This will be a good thing. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for round two? I'll pass myself, so. Okay, any motions to consider?
Mr. Mayor pro tem?
Yes.
I move to approve.
Second?
Need to have a motion.
I move to approve the...
Move to award the bid?
To award the bid.
To Clark &amp; Sons Excavating?
Go back to the whole thing.
All right. Mr. Mayor pro tem? I move to approve the bid to Clark &amp; Sons Excavating, Inc.
On the Northeast Lake Road and North, go ahead and...
On the Northeast Lake Road and Northeast Everett Street Improvement Project, up to 10% change over authorization in the amount of $5,269,528.33. In the amount of $5,269,528.33.
Second.
And moved by Carter, seconded to do -- approve the bid award for $5,269,528.33 to Clark &amp; Sons Excavating Inc. For the Northeast Lake Road and Northeast Everett Street Improvements Project. With up to 10% change order authorization. Any discussion, further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. We are now up to the second portion of public comments for the evening. Any member of the public wishes to come forward, state your name and address. I'll provide you up to three minutes on the digital timer at the end of the podium.
All right, I'm back again. I'm with Strabel. And I want to bring up again the subject of the roundabout. This is the first time I've actually sat here and listened to this process. Do you realize how much money we're just authorizing to spend? And how much of it actually comes out of the City of Kamis budget? Can anybody tell me that number? Forget the grants, forget the quote "free state or government money." How much is the City of Kamis paying for this roundabout? Can somebody tell me that?
Our current adopted policy does not allow for citizen interaction during public comments.
I know, and that's a real problem.
We can address your concerns in a different form.
And that's a real problem because does everybody realize where the world and in the United States and the state economy is going? In the last month, what's gone on, what's happened? Does everybody think it's all the same? It's all gonna be the same next week and the week after? It's not. You're being foolish, and I'm gonna say that again. I know a lot about what's going on outside. And I guarantee you, it's not the same. You maybe think it's the same in the City of Kamis, but it's not gonna be. A lot of money's gonna get spent. And the revenue sources that everybody dreams about and talks about and all the great stuff that's gonna happen. And if I hear the word tech jobs one more time in this county, I'm just gonna probably give up. You authorized a 10% overrun on this contract, if I'm not mistaken. That's a half a million dollars. Nobody has to come in and explain it, nobody has to talk about it. Just $500,000 bang, out the door. Think you've got the same issue right now on the City Hall expansion. That started out at how many hundred thousand? And now it's pushing a million. Somebody's gonna pay for this. Problem is, the City of Kamis people, the people that live here, are getting tired of this. Last thing I want to bring up is quote "virtual meetings." I think that's a big mistake. Virtual meetings, Zoom video, My Meeting and all this great stuff, doesn't work very well. People want to talk to the representatives, they want to sit down with them, they want to meet them face to face. And council meetings and workshops being continued during the time that everything else is shut down. I mean, you shut the library down today. If it's not safe to go to the library, why are you having council meetings? Why do you have a workshop? Nobody's gonna come. People are afraid to do anything. Why? Look at the city website. You got a picture of this big giant orange ball sitting there. If you want to scare people, you're doing a good job with that. But that's a big mistake. If you want to operate in the dark, you're doing a good job with it. Because people don't get to participate. So I say the virtual meetings and council meetings being done when you don't have any public participation is a big mistake. I mean, there's nobody here, except you and me. And you just are spending 7 million plus of the city's money. That's all I got. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Okay, closed public comment section. Council is going to adjourn to executive session to discuss property acquisition in terms of RCW 4230.110 and potential litigation. Counselor, approximately how long?
25 minutes.
Thank you.
No decisions will be made.
And no decisions will be made, and we are going into executive session.
Thanks for being here for this meeting. Thanks for keeping the peace. Old guy stuff, you know?
I'm there with you, man, I'm there.
Thanks, Mitch.
All right, see ya. Hey Greg.
I sent this email to you and Alicia, but I've been doing, you know, like everybody back and forth, crazy emails. So I'm gonna adopt the basic EDCs, so change, which is closing a lot of the -- Just do any calls that can be done over the phone, that's great. I'll send those to you tomorrow.
Okay, cool.
Oh, they're waiting for you.
I know.
Thank you, Bonnie. I call Bonnie Bernie. I call Ellen Helen. And I call somebody else Mrs. -- Mr. Roberts or something tonight, it's been a mess.
I need him to come in and resume the meeting.
Yes.
You can't leave.
I'm not gonna leave, he's waiting for Greg.
Yeah, I just wanna see everyone. Oh, it's good.
We just can't lose a drink or something. Somebody might call.
I'm not gonna.
Can I work? Yeah? Sit down, wait.
Here are discussions COVID-19. So we changed up the start timing in present day.
We have to move that. Have to close out the meeting.
You tell me when, I'll do the win.
Whenever, whenever you want.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned. After the end of the executive session, no action is taken.
Good night.
Night, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Wait a minute, I got homework?
Uh huh.
Aw, man.
Did you grab the one off Mayor's desk too, or is that another one I need?
That's a different one.
Thank you.
I didn't even grab it.
Wait, did you get the other one? This is like, this is like, it's showing.
Here you go, I signed this.
Is the other one? Okay, thanks Sean.
Yeah?
Enough excitement for one day.
Oh my goodness, what a day.
Guess what tomorrow will bring?
Tomorrow should be better.
Flexible. The key word from staff was today was flexible.
Yeah, I'm telling you.
Are you got these ones signed?
Yeah.
I'll sign them for you in a second.
All right. Have a good night.